Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. Could we have roll call, please?
Pfaff.
Here.
Bow.
Pachek.
Garrity.
Here.
Joanne. Joanne, David's gonna do that. Okay.
Okay, let's try that again. Pfaff.
Here.
Pachek.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Nordentoff.
Here.
Bow.
Here.
Garrity.
Here.
Sula.
Present.
All present.
Everybody's here. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, I need to just read this into the record. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order in response to COVID-19 number 2020-07, in-person attendance requirements under the Open Meetings Act have been suspended and relaxed. Therefore, tonight, certain members of the Planning and Zoning Board will be participating remotely, and that will be reflected in the minutes. Also, the petitioner for an agenda item...
That's not true tonight.
That's not true tonight.
It's not true tonight. Okay. That's it. Okay. First item on the agenda is a public hearing petition by the Village of Gurnee for a zoning map amendment for property located east of 731 and south of Route 21. David, I assume you're doing this?
The Village of Gurnee is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 5.4 acres located immediately east of 731 Route 21 from O2 Office Campus District to P Public Lands District to accommodate the Village of Gurnee Satellite Fire Station Number Three.
And I assume you're presenting as well?
I am presenting as well.
Okay. I turn the floor over to you.
So, the Village of Gurnee received this property as a land donation. Brian, do I need to be sworn in?
I'll swear. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sorry I missed that.
The Village of Gurnee received this parcel of land last year with the anticipation of building a third fire station on the property. The land is well situated to accommodate faster response times towards Heather Ridge and some of the unincorporated parcels that the Village of Gurnee Fire Department provides service to through the Warren-Joakine Fire Protection District. Plans are to build a satellite station on the property. I believe it is about 14,000 square feet, housing six full-time firemen and one lieutenant on site. So, this will be a true satellite station. No major offices. It will just be sleeping bunks, day room, and basically the fire station bay. So, that is the plan for the property. It's appropriate to zone it public as it is a Village of Gurnee-owned parcel, and that will also...the zoning will accommodate the future proposed land use of the fire station.
Thank you. There's nobody here in the audience. Did we receive any communications one way or the other about this from...
We did not.
Okay. Does anybody on the Planning and Zoning Board have any questions? Brian's shaking his head no.
No, I have no questions.
No.
Edwin's shaking his head no. Anybody on the phone? Tim? Tim, are you shaking your head no? David?
Tim?
I'm shaking my head no.
Is that Dave? Okay. Laura?
Nope.
And Josh?
No questions from me.
Tim, are you still there?
Can you guys hear me?
We didn't hear you before. Do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. I'm gonna open the floor to the public as a formality. There's nobody here. I'm gonna close the floor to the public. Second round, does anybody have any questions? If not, Joanne, roll call, please. Oh, a motion. In a second. I was trying to make record speed, I guess. Is anybody willing to advance a motion?
Nordentoff?
Yes, Mr. Nordentoff.
I move forward a favorable recommendation to the Village Board for the petition by the Village of Gurnee for a zoning map amendment for the property located east of 731 and south of Route 21 to be rezoned to P Public Lands.
Do we have a second? Mr. Bow will second. Any discussion? Okay, can we have roll call, please? Oh, David's gonna do it. Okay.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Pachek.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Nordentoff.
Aye.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye. Motion carries. Just you know, we recommend to the Village Board, David, so I'll make the final decision.
I'll talk to Tracy to see when it's on the board agenda.
Okay. Good, I appreciate that. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing, a petition of the Woodland School District Number 50 for a special use permit to allow a ground-mounted solar energy system at their facilities located at 1115 North Hunt Club Road. David, staff report, please.
Okay. Mitchell Hayden Burke, on behalf of Woodland School District 50, is requesting a special use permit to allow the installation of a ground-mounted solar energy system on the Woodland Intermediate School property located at 1115 North Hunt Club Road. The subject property is currently zoned P Public Lands District, and as such, a ground-mounted solar energy system requires a special use permit. A representative from the petitioner is here tonight to discuss the application.
Okay, great. As this is a public hearing, could you please stand? And Brian, could you swear him in, please?
Sure can. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to you.
I'm skip shy.
There are microphones on those tables.
There are microphones down there? Okay, great.
It should be working.
Are you going to put...
Is it working?
So, just in general, we are petitioning. I'm with Siemens.
Hey, David?
Yes. Sorry.
It's not really picking up the audio. If he can use that actually handheld or slide it closer.
Yeah. Is that any better?
Yeah.
That's better. That's better.
So, Siemens is the design and constructor of a solar system for the intermediate school. And a couple of things. I'll go over just the basics of the system. I don't know if this has been seen before, if this is your first look at it.
We received hard copies a few days ago.
You have? Okay. So, just tell me when it's too much information, and I can move on. And then I'd also like to speak to a couple of the concerns brought up in this email. I had just seen it for the first time now, but a couple of these.
David, should we read that email in?
I'll do that after he makes an initial presentation.
All right. So, the system is a ground-mounted solar system, and this location is divided into two parts. You can see there an east and a west. Pardon me. And then the electrical service is bundled together at each location, and it flows underground to the building.
Excuse me just a minute. For those members that are on the phone, there's somebody shifting around. Could you all put your phones on mute unless you're actually talking? Thank you.
So, the outlines there and in your packet give the actual dimensions, and that's what you see there. And then the power's aggregated. At each of those locations, it flows underground into the building where it taps into the comm ed service. So, it's a fairly simple system. It's a lot of physical stuff out there, but basically, it's a bunch of panels, receives power from the sun, converts that into AC circuit, and taps into comm ed. The power's used to power the school. So, it's not a money-making venture, one way or the other, but it will offset the majority of the school's electrical costs. Questions? What can I tell you?
We'd like to start. Brian, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this moment.
Edwin?
I don't really have any questions, but, well, I guess I do. It looks to me like this is taking up one of the soccer fields. Is that correct? Or at least a portion of it, half of it?
It takes up part of the field. The piece to the right is very wet. They don't really use it for very much. But, again, this was sort of the school's ask as far as where we were locating this.
So, what it looks to me like is they're losing two soccer fields, one on either side. The end of the...actually, not even to the end, of the solar panels, there's already a goal there, which means it's already over halfway into the field. So, it looks to me like they're losing one. The other thing I would say is I really just...the looks of this...I mean, the one at the high school is set away from the school. There's nothing there where the kids are doing anything around it. To me, this is gonna fence them in in this field, and it's gonna take a beautiful school and turn it into a pretty trashy-looking place to me. That's my opinion, anyway.
Okay. I'll turn to people on the telephone. Laura?
Um, not right now, no.
Okay. Tim?
Is the solar energy generated only going to benefit the intermediate school, or is any of the electricity going to benefit the other woodland facilities?
Two of the other schools are also getting a raise. They're not within your jurisdiction. Each site's power generation offsets power for that school specifically. But, obviously, as a district, all the costs are coming into District 50, and so it helps overall, you know, their electric and carbon footprint.
So, the other two, are they on Gauges Lake Road?
Yes. Well, one is on Gauges Lake. The other one is the middle school on Washington.
Why is that not in our jurisdiction?
The school is in our jurisdiction. However, the ball fields where they are planning on placing the solar fields are unincorporated.
Oh, okay. All right. Tim, anything else?
No.
Josh?
Just one question about the permanent physical structure. How much of this is sort of...I really don't know how we classify, you know, how permanent these structures are. And I'm looking through the schematics. I'm just trying to better understand, you know, how permanent the structure is gonna be.
Well, the structure can be taken down. So, I mean, it's permanent to the point where it's basically has a 20-year lifespan. So, it can certainly be removed. The posts that hold up the panels are simply drilled into the ground. They're not even set in concrete. So, they're...it's just a method of installation. They're like large screws, and they're screwed down into the ground, four feet in, and then they stick up about around 10 feet, 10 and a half feet. That dimension is in one of the other drawings. So, this isn't...this system is not viewed necessarily like a building that you'd say has a lifespan of plus 50 years. This is viewed as a 20-year, but it could also be renewed. In 20 years, you would have to think the panels would probably be double their efficiency. And at that point, it may behoove the client to change the panels. Because the racking, the support structure basically can support many different brands and types of panels. Sizes and shapes are fairly generic from manufacturer to manufacturer, but every year, a given square footage of panel generates more wattage. It's just the nature of it. It's sort of like computer chips. Every year, they get a little better and a little better and a little better. Same...you could say the same thing about solar panels.
Is the area going to be fenced?
She's asking if the area's gonna be fenced.
Yes. Yeah, the area...each of those areas has an outlined fence. It's called a no-climb fence. So, it's a metal fence. You can see through it, so you can't really hide. But, it is designed so you can't put your foot into the void like you can on a typical chain link fence. So, it provides a barrier, but it's very difficult to climb. Now, obviously, if somebody really wants to, they can, but your average kid walking by is not gonna be able to just pull his way up there. And the district's gone over this with their safety and security people, too, and this is what they've asked us to do. There are a couple of concerns about having a solid fence. One of them was actually brought up in this email about creating sort of a hiding place if it was all solid, and you'd block that off. And for that reason, and a couple of others, we don't feel a solid fence is a good idea for this environment. It also...this is just an opinion. To me, a solid fence creates more of a visual distraction, if you like. It's just a large, solid object, whereas the metal fencing with a void area, you really can look through it. It does not...again, this is just an aesthetic thing. It doesn't create the same kind of a barrier as what a board-on-board solid wood fence like is at Warren High School.
Dave?
Yes, thank you. My question revolves mostly around unintended consequences. And what I mean by that is to the southern border. I'll address the eastern array. When I was out there today, I noticed that there's a pretty substantial tree line that's in place and a nice line that's evergreen. But, this time of year gives you a good idea as to the worst-case scenario in terms of what the kind of gaps are between when the leaves are off. So, I know it'll be a better scenario during the summertime, but my question is whether there's been any study or modeling done to indicate whether there's any particular time of day and/or year combination where the right angle of the sun and the time of day or whatever turns those into mirrors that shine blinding light across those rear yards, you know, on the most eastern homes on Applewood, maybe the most eastern five or six homes. Maybe not so much of an issue on the western array, but there is one home immediately on the southwest corner that's in pretty close proximity to the array. So, again, I just wonder whether there's a scenario by which anybody in the backyards there would be literally blinded by reflection. Is that something that's been looked at?
We do what's called a helio study of the angle of the sun on the panels, and it's highly unlikely. The panels are angled back at a very steep angle. So, in order to reflect on the homes, they would have to be at a much steeper angle vertically. They'd have to be much closer to the vertical in order for the sun to come down, hit the panel, and reflect back at a home. These are mostly almost laid down, and you can see that in...have to forgive me. This is a little slow here. But, you can see the panel angle there on one of the drawings. Let's see here. So, that is something we...
Is it PB 1-2?
Yes. Yeah, it's got two...one is a more detailed, and the other one shows it...
It looks to be about a 40-degree angle?
Yeah, it's a little less. It's like 30...yeah, it's like 38, yeah. Give or take.
That's pretty good for an accountant.
Huh? It's pretty...yeah. Good eye.
Okay, so then if I understand it correctly, then these neighbors that are lined up by it, they have nothing to worry about?
Nothing.
What about their second-floor windows?
Well, they'll be able to look down into it, but it's not gonna reflect into the home. But, when you're up on the second floor, you certainly are gonna have more of a view down towards it. You also, if you look at the distance from those homes, I think we're about 85 feet to the property line, and then the homes are probably more than that, you know, to the homes themselves. It's a fairly large distance from the home. Now, not from the property...
Karen, can I ask you a question?
Not from the property line, but from the structure. So, if you're standing in the second floor.
Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
Okay, then, part two to that, I guess just from a visual standpoint, and I agree. I mean, I think the distance is fairly large, but is there an opportunity to maybe enhance that tree line and fill the gaps with additional evergreens that could grow to be as full and nice as the existing? Because I noticed that basin is sort of perimeter with a berm, and I'm wondering whether that could be landscaped, if needed, just to kind of create another additional visual or barrier in between that for those neighbors that have enjoyed that open space for so long?
Well, I suppose anything could be done. I would say it is not planned in the scope of the project to landscape that, you know, 300 or 400 feet along that line on the right side. There is a berm, so...and that's another thing. So, the homes are elevated, but the panels are down from the top of that berm about three and a half feet. So, I think the code is max of 12 feet off the ground, and we're only at 10. But, our ground level where we're sitting, we're in a low area. So, we're actually down a number of feet. So, the berm gives you some visual block of the lower part, and sure, you could certainly come along later and put plantings along that berm. I don't believe you could plant lower because of the water. So, we went through this at one of the other sites, and it's simply too wet there to really sustain. This is the issue at middle school about planting, and it would just create a problem. If you have evergreens of some kind, and I'm not an arborist, but you really...they don't do well if they're sitting in water for periods of time, unlike a willow, for example.
That's about the only thing that does.
It's a tree that's happy in water.
Okay. Dave, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Just kind of a follow-up. Are any trees gonna come down?
No.
And...
No removal planned.
And this is kind of a technical curiosity more than anything else. What happens to all the energy that's generated when the school's not running, like, all summer long?
They get credited for that back from Edison. So, what happens is they use as much as they can. So, if they're at a full-load day, they would use, you know, all the power. But then, if they're not at a full load, it goes back to Edison, and there's a meter...there's a utility-grade meter on this that then they get credit. So, there's the regular Edison meter, and then this has its own, and it's just a summative piece where it's like $10,000 on the Ed meter and hopefully $11,000 on this one, and they get a credit. But, either way, they're not paying $10,000 to Edison. So, it works out very well.
I'm gonna open the floor to the public. I guess...
Edwin has a question. I have another question.
Okay.
In regards, is this estimated to pay itself off in the 20-year lifespan?
Yes. Actually, the way this works is the school district actually doesn't pay anything. So, there was in the email, and I'm glad to speak to this, I'm happy to speak to it.
Let's wait until we read that into the record. Okay?
Okay. So, the school district actually pays nothing upfront. They share in the cost savings over the 20 years. So, Siemens takes the risk of building and installing the system. The school is generating all this savings all the way along, and out in the future, we would make a profit. So, say you're 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, that's where we benefit. But, there's no capital outlay for the school district and hence the community.
Okay. So, does...
Thank you.
We're kind of on shaky ground whether this is a rollover or not, but...
Yeah.
Does the school get like a utility bill every month, then?
Well, they get an Edison bill.
They'll still get an Edison bill?
They still get an Edison bill. But, again, it's an offset. So, we're generating power, which is kind of making their meter not turn.
And I assume the panels are fixed?
Yes.
So, they're not gonna move with the changing of the seasons?
Right. There's no...none of that motorized. So, as you can imagine, you generate much more power in the summer. In the winter, you have A, shorter hours, and B, your sun is a lower elevation declination, they call it. So, you know, in the winter, your sun is sweeping low, and the arc is much shorter. In the summer, you're up and over the top. You're generating much more power. And that's how the thing is modeled.
At this time, I'm gonna open the floor to the public. There's no one besides us and the petitioner in the chamber, but David...so, there's nobody to swear in, Brian, but David has an email to read into the record.
Yes. So, we received this email last week. So, it is from Kristin Bose, who's a Gurnee resident as well as a woodland parent, and I'll read it into the record. "I'm writing to you about an agenda item scheduled for the April 1 meeting. I would urge you...I would like to urge you not to approve the solar panels at the woodland school. A question I would ask: Has feedback been gathered regarding the solar panels that have been put up at Warren Township High School? What was learned? What could be done differently? It seems there are now budget concerns from the district as maintenance of the panels was considered? From that community posts that I have seen, everyone is extremely upset at how much of an eyesore the solar panels are. The fence, which looks somewhat nice now, will quickly become weathered. Was the planting of natural, slow-growing and smaller-in-size landscaping considered? Seems like a lot could be learned from that experience before embarking on another project of the same nature. In addition, it seems like a huge security concern to have a fenced-off and hard-to-see into area so close to the school. It seems to be an open invitation for a hiding spot for those wanting to harm the students or school, snipers, child predators, et cetera. Lastly, why not the roofs? Why take valuable and expansive land away from the schools? The fields are full on any given afternoon with sports activities as well as being used on the weekends. Land is at a premium. Panels on roofs would be less of an eyesore and security threat. In addition, updating zoning at this juncture to allow a school district to move forward with capital spend while the state, city, county, and county are facing tough financial times and general uncertainty toward the future seems ill-advised and tone-deaf as to what is going on in the world around us. Schools should be focused on Chromebooks and e-curriculum, not solar panels. Please do not approve this pending item without filling thinking through and exploring the above concerns. Respectfully, Kristin Bose."
Thanks, Dave. I guess the one question at hand, were the roofs considered?
The roofs were considered. And the school district would have had to upgrade the roofs. They did not want to do it. So, you know, it definitely was looked at.
Upgrade because of the weight of the panels?
Age of the roof, condition of the roof. They just didn't...you know, we offered that option, and they chose to go this route. I'd say our customers are sort of 50/50 on this. Some are happy to have them on the roof. Creates a lot of maintenance problems for your roof. Of course, it conserves the land.
Second round of questions, Brian?
I'd just like to say that I'm just very disappointed that no one from the school district is actually here to talk about this or answer any questions. That's my comment.
Noted. Edwin?
Mr. Chairman, I could not hear who was just talking. Could we get a repeat?
Oh, that was Mr. Bow expressing frustration that no one from District 50 is in attendance this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'd like to understand the school district's thinking and the usage of the land to Kristin's email. If you go to... in the usage of the land to Kristen's email. If you go to, you know, the site map in the package that we were provided, I mean, there is a considerable amount of land being used for these solar panels that will take away from school activities on nice days. And I'd just like to understand that thinking. I think Kristen brought up a lot of good points, and I'd like to understand the thinking, because if we're going to say, yeah, this is a 20-year commitment to use this land in this way, where, yeah, it might be able to come up, we might be able to take them out, but we're stuck with these, you know, large fences and solar panels that are just going to, you know, it's a 20-year commitment that are going to take away from soccer and field activities. I'd love to hear from the school and the thinking of why that's a good usage of limited land space around the school.
Tim, I'm going to ask Brian Winter to kind of weigh in here. I mean, from my perspective, and I think I'm right on this, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, our purview isn't to judge whether or not the school is balancing their priorities properly. Our purview is whether or not it's a reasonable request to install the solar panels. Brian, can you help us out there?
Well, yeah, I think that's an accurate statement that the chairman has made. But, you know, again, you know, if there's anyone there present, it sounds like they did look at other alternatives. It's always helpful, should there be some additional questions. But no, Mr. Sula, you're correct.
Okay. So are aesthetic concerns something under our purview, Brian?
Again, not directly. If that has impact as the safety, welfare of surrounding properties, then it would, but not strictly on aesthetics.
Okay.
But the safety concern that was-
Right, Jim, you should have, you should-
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tristan.
Sorry, you should have in a copy of the standards for special use in your packet.
I realize that. I'm just trying to get things on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
But the safety concern, this is Tim, by the way.
You can have the floor, Tim.
Josh was the one that made the other comment, Jim, just so you know. The safety concern, though, that was expressed, and the aesthetic, would be fair game, correct? I mean, safety and aesthetic of how it looks to fit in within the village.
Safety, yes. Safety, yes. Appearance, no. Unless we, unless a reputable authority could state the aesthetics would impair value in the surrounding area. Correct? Dave?
If it would negatively impact, reasonably assumed, if the commission reasonably can deduct that the impacts on the surrounding properties would be negatively impacted.
And we don't have any-
Which is a very high burden. I mean, that's, you know, that letter, it would not, that letter doesn't provide a basis for that position.
I totally understand, and we don't have anything close to a reputable expert giving us any advice on that.
This is Josh. Can I ask a question about the approval of the special use permits? Number two states that the proposed special use is compatible with the general land use of adjacent properties and other property within the immediate vicinity. Okay? Well, one could argue that a large, substantial, 20-year physical solar panel farm is not compatible with the general land use of a residential area right next to an intermediate school. Is that the way, am I interpreting that correctly? If I want to argue that or make that stance or make that position, is that a correct way to interpret it?
I concur.
I think you're interpreting it right, but I think we would have to have compelling evidence as to why that is a fact.
Right. And you also have to consider that this is an ancillary use to a school, which is a permitted use within the residential zoning district. So schools are permitted by right within any residential zoning district. The proposal is an ancillary use within that that's been contemplated within the zoning district, and that's, you know, even though it is zoned public, it could be, the school could be zoned residential, and this special use permit process would be available to them even within the residential district.
I'm just, to build on what, this is Tim, to build on what Josh was saying. I mean, it is, I'm just trying to look at this from the 100,000-foot level, because it sounds like, what I'm hearing is that there's not a lot of reasons to disapprove, but it is a special use permit, right? I mean, if it was allowed by ordinance or by law, they wouldn't be coming before us for a special use. So help me out here on why, I'm kind of overhearing on the phone that it's, like, it's like, there's not a lot of options for us if we are thinking in terms of this being not a good special use. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, well, what I could add to that is that each board member has to consider, you know, the standards. And basically, the fact that it is a special use, the use is something that is acceptable. What each commissioner must do is, is there something in particular with the topography or the location of this property that would create some hardships? So this otherwise permitted use, but because it is a special use, is there a reason not to recommend this? The use itself is not, is a valid use, but now the commission has to consider this use on this particular property, whether that's appropriate, and relying on those standards.
So, Brian, is it safe to say that the criteria number one is the most important one that we need to be looking at?
Well, we don't do that. I mean, and it's not necessarily, you know, so you just have to consider all of them.
But if you're saying that the use is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the word, the use is acceptable, but the special use is looking at conditions?
Well, yeah. What you can't say is, I don't like solar panels, and I don't think that's a good use. You can't say that. You have to apply the application of that use to this particular piece of property.
Okay. All right.
I'll just add further comments, if that's okay.
Who speak? Is that Josh?
This is Josh, yeah.
Okay.
I am a big supporter of solar panels. I will say that, right? But this particular land use, I do not think it fits in well with this neighborhood. I think it's gobbling up a tremendous amount of land in the middle of a residential area. And I think it, under, you know, the approval standards for special use permits, number two, I don't think it's, this is just my opinion, I don't think it's compatible with that general land use of the adjacent properties to have a solar farm in the middle of a neighborhood next to a school.
And I'm a proponent of alternative energy sources as well, but I can tell you, when I was a CFO, if someone would have come into my office with a proposal that had a 16-year payback, I'd almost laugh them out of my office. So, I mean, I'm all for responsible solar energy, but I don't think that's within our purview right now. Dave?
I'm sorry, did you just say- I don't have any, I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Okay. Josh, is there something else you wanted to say?
I'm sorry, did you just say it has a 16-year payoff?
Well, the testimony was before that they're not going to start making money until you're 16, 17, 18. That's what I heard.
I think, yep. Okay. That is laughable, but out of our purview.
Yes.
That was for them, though, not the school.
Right.
Because the school will make, will save money, so they will be basically making money off of it.
Can someone repeat that last, back and forth?
Sorry. The profit comes for the company putting in the solar panels after 16 years, but the school will be saving money day one.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could clarify, that's all an estimate. We have to, we run a model.
I understand.
Okay, just so it's not hard and fast.
But the economics aren't within our purview. I shouldn't have done that. Any other questions?
And, Mr. Sula?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that although there is residential to the south, somebody indicated that this was in the middle of a residential area. Just keep in mind that to the east is the Grand Tri-State Business Park, to the north is ComEd, and then some office, and the church, and then commercial, and then to the west is Hunt Club Road, fire station, and then some residential.
Okay.
I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead, Edwin.
I don't know if this is relevant or not, but I'd love to know. Were the parents in the school district made aware of this? Or will they be given a chance to take a look at this themselves? I mean-
I'm assuming it's a school board decision.
Was it a school board decision?
I assume, anything major has got to be a school board decision.
Yeah, yes, this went through.
So they're accountable to the taxpayers, they're not accountable to the parents?
Parents are taxpayers, right?
Well, they're accountable to all of us, not just people with current students.
All right.
That's my civics information for the day. There was a little discussion about fencing. Given that these things are, what, nine feet tall at their highest point?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, I don't see much point in trying to say that a solid fence would be better than a see-through fence, because to have a nine-foot-tall barrier to block all line of sight would be worse, I think. So, just to circle back on that, my own opinion. Any other questions or comments before we go to a motion?
So this is Bowe. I just have one more, you know, last comment, and it's on standard number two, considering, you know, compatibility. I mean, I don't really know how you can argue that this is compatible with the surrounding uses when the proximity to the school is such that you have to have this elaborate fence system to make sure that children aren't injured, people don't get in there, and things like that. To me, it's just counterintuitive. I don't know how you can indicate that this is compatible, particularly with the school. I mean, it's, I understand that, you know, it's been said, well, this is an ancillary use. This isn't putting up some, you know, pole barn to store, you know, grass equipment in and things like that. I mean, this is an elaborate setup that I don't know how you can argue it's compatible.
I hear what you're saying, Brian, and I think where I'm hung up on number two is it's, they're referring to adjacent properties. I think what you're saying is more solid concern for standard number one, the public safety.
Right, but it also says, or other property in the immediate vicinity. I mean, it's just not adjacent properties. It's all property. So, that's my comment.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion? Jim?
Let me just go around once. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
This is Josh. I'd just like to agree with what Commissioner Bowe just mentioned. I agree with this, what he said.
I also agree. This is Tim. I agree with Josh and with Brian.
All right. Tim, did you want to make a motion?
I will. So I'd like to make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of Mitchell Hayden Burke on behalf of Woodland School District Number 50 for a special use permit to allow a ground-mounted solar energy system at 1115 North Hunt Club Road in substantial conformance with the plan stated February 14, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second. Norton Toft.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, Dave?
Pfaff.
Nay.
Pachak.
Nay.
Riley.
Nay.
Norton Toft.
Nay.
Bowe.
Nay.
Garrity.
Nay.
Sula.
Aye. Motion fails, six to one. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 15, I believe there's Politicians, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There's no one here from the public, so I'll close.
Would you explain next steps to the petitioner?
Oh, I'm sorry. We recommend to the village board, and the village board makes the final decision, and someone from staff will let you know when the village board will be taking up this matter.
Will either, anybody from our team have an opportunity to address the board at that time?
Yes.
Other than like a public comment, but I mean, as the petitioner.
The mayor typically will open, if you have a request or comment, she will typically take, allow you to address the board at that time.
And especially given that we sent an unfavorable recommendation.
Correct.
That will probably be the case.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we are publicly known for some items on the 15th. There's nobody here from the public. Be well, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Moved by Mr. Bowe, second by Mr. Pfaff. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.